Patient order. The next regular Board of Education meeting is on Tuesday, August 24th at 7:30 PM in the board meeting room. A big apology to all of our community out there on Zoom. We had a Zoom technical issue. We had three of our tech people working on that, so I apologize. I really appreciate your patience. So, thank you. I'd also like to welcome those few folks that we have in person. So nice to see people in person. We have that capability within limits based on some social distancing, so we'll make sure to continue to communicate that out, but I think it's worked this evening and it's just good to see some familiar faces in the audience. I hope everyone's having a good summer so far, and we appreciate everyone joining us this evening. I'll keep my chairperson comments brief. I want to thank everyone that continues to write in, email in, and phone call in about where we are with the school reopening. Dr. Adley will get into more of the details. Believe another meeting was held today and no real decision at the state level about masks or no masks at the start of the school year. It is as it is currently that masks are required as we go into the new school year. I'm hoping that continues to be reviewed and perhaps changes over time, although the overall COVID numbers continue to change. So, we work closely with our local health officials. Alan works closely with the state, the State Department of Health, the State Department of Education, the supers. The board chairs all discuss this. I think I will say personally myself, and I'm sure other members of the board would say it individually, would love to go back to school without masks. I have a daughter in summer school, dropping her off and picking her up is just not fun with the masks. I would ask to continue to communicate at the state level by everyone in our community with our local state legislature legislators and leaders to let them know we would love local control. I think the board will continue to discuss that and get some communication up to Hartford. We would like local control based on local numbers and how our community is doing. I think we're at some number I saw today, 97% vaccination rate, one of the highest in the states. So, our community is state focused on it, our school, our children are state focused on it. So, we'd like to get back to school in as normal way as possible. Dr. Adley will give us some updates, but we'll continue to move forward. So, with that, I will open it up. Michelle, if you're ready for public comment?
I am. Good evening. If you would like to speak during public comment, please click the participants icon on the bottom of your Zoom screen. Next, click the raise hand option. You will notice a blue hand icon appear in the upper corner of your screen where your face, name, and/or number appears. When it is your turn to speak, the facilitator will identify you and announce that you're unmuted for public comment. Once recognized and unmuted, please state your name and address. You will have up to three minutes to comment.
So, Michelle, why don't we start with the folks that are in the audience?
Absolutely.
And then we'll go to the Zoom. So, anyone public comment in the audience? We have a chair and a mic set up at the end of the table there. Sure. Please step up and state your name and your address. Thank you.
Hi, everyone.
I think you're gonna have to speak into the speaker.
Yep, I will.
Thank you so much.
Perfect. Can you hear me? Okay, great. My name is Chris Wajilla. I'm at Forest Stanton Road. I represent a group, excuse me, I represent the group Unmask Our Kids Darien, advocating for choice in masking this coming school year. I'd like to talk about the size of the SARS-CoV-2 particulates and provide a quote from hazardous from hazardous environments PPE applications expert Megan Mansell. Please note that when she is speaking about COVID particulates, she means the virus that causes COVID disease or SARS-CoV-2. Quote, "COVID particulates range from .06 to .14 microns. N95 masks are the baseline minimum PPE requirement for COVID-19 sized particulates. COVID is a radically behaving particulate that does not respond predictively to gravity." The OSHA requirement for personal protection in known contagion is a new N95 grade or higher respirator plus eye protection. In a workplace, this requires an OSHA certified fit test. She goes on to say, quote, "While it is not a violation to require a face covering in some relevant settings pre-COVID, it is an OSHA violation when people think it is being warranted for personal protection, which many blindly do when reckless mandates are issued by governments. It is an OSHA and furthermore, a human rights violation to require someone to wear a face covering deemed unfit for use against a given particulate size. Cloth and surgical masks do not filter COVID and do not meet OSHA standards as PPE for COVID-sized contagion. If cloths and surgical masks are not appropriate personal protective equipment for a COVID-sized contagion, why are we requiring them for school attendance? In fact, several recent news articles state that N95 respirators should be considered if mask mandates are reinstated nationwide. Darien parents, are you prepared to put your children in an N95 face mask for seven to eight hours a day? It is well established that children are not drivers of transmission of the SARS-CoV-2 virus and are extremely unlikely to develop severe disease. Teachers have had the opportunity to be vaccinated. Our schools are as safe as they can be. Superintendent and board members, it's time to make masking optional this school year. It's time to take a stand and formally send a letter to the governor and public health officials requesting mask choice in schools and local control over COVID-related mitigation strategies. And it's time to give parents a seat at the table. I would also request the board-
You're just almost at time.
Yep, I'm finishing up. I would also request that the board convene a specialist session to allow for extended testimony and question and answer session with Megan Mansell so that you and Darien parents have the opportunity to hear from an actual PPE expert on this subject. Thank you so much for your time.
Mrs. Wajilla, thank you so much. Thank you for coming this evening.
Teresa Boat, 22 Circle Road. While we have a high vaccination rate in the state and in Darien, it's eligible people who are vaccinated. Nobody, not one student in the elementary schools are eligible to be vaccinated. My son is at the high school. He is vaccinated, so I'm not necessarily speaking for him, but I was at my doctor's office last week and he stated to me, you know, the American Academy of Pediatrics is recommending masks in K-12 schools. The CDC has come out and said that. We are not a bubble and viruses are certainly not a bubble. Our kids travel to other towns that may not have the same vaccination rates. It is summertime. People are traveling to states that definitely do not have the same vaccination rate as Connecticut. We have to think about the health and safety of all of our students and our youngest ones are simply not vaccinated.
Thank you, Mrs. Boat. Anyone else in the audience? Thank you. Michelle?
There are no raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. We will move on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see people out. It's the summertime, so the updates are brief. Summer school is coming to an end and two weeks, two weeks ago, we had, it seems like two weeks ago, where we had our rainstorm. I want to thank people for their support on that day, particularly our bus company, who got our children to school on time and to our parents. We were able to actually get the day in, but it wasn't easy with the transportation around time, but we thank everybody for the cooperation and flexibility in making that happen. We welcome our new principals and assistant principals to town and also to the school system. We had a one-day retreat for all our new administrators on July 21st. The focus was that, on that was on the strategic planning and school improvement processes. We have all the principals and assistant principals who are new will be participating tomorrow in orientation. We have special education session, additional session. They actually got a session also on July 21st. So, we look forward to welcome them then and continue with the onboarding process. So, that's part of the process that we have for them as we join the system to become acquainted to processes and procedures. They've been spending a lot of time here in central services and with the different departments. Just a reminder to people that if you don't get a wee chance, perhaps you will with the Junior Musical Theater production over at Toganik, July, it's Wednesday, tomorrow and Thursday, and I think it's Aladdin kids that have been practicing. What I saw so far was delightful, so I'm sure a wonderful job. And also the Darien and the Musical Theater, the Wizard of Oz are putting on this tremendous to see that these are dedicated kids in the arts and that they put on a tremendous performances. So, if you get a wee chance, that is Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, I believe, for the Wizard of Oz. Those are updates at the moment, other than the school update, that will be forthcoming.
Good. Thank you, Dr. Adley. Approval of minutes. It is requested the board approve the following. The minutes of the regular meeting held on June 22nd, 2021, and the minutes of the special meeting held on July 13th, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes? Mrs. Akman, Second Mr. Maroni, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Board committee reports. Just, yes, Mrs. Akman?
The finance committee meeting, a finance committee has a meeting this Friday at 8:30 AM, which is outside of our regular schedule, but it's just to go over some of what we talked last time and review memo. Should be quick, but for anyone interested.
Good. Thank you, Mrs. Akman. Just a quick update on Oxbridge continues to move along. No real issues from the storm, some washout runoff, but they've done a great job up there. The site is really not accessible. I was up there the other day. Katie and the audience could probably vouch for that. If you look at the site, it's hard to believe they will have it organized for a school opening in terms of parking and bus loops, but they will. They have a very detailed plan, but we continue to be moving forwards. It's exciting to see the structure up. This past couple of weeks, electric was put in and a new pole came across the street and sewer continues to be worked on too. So, a lot going on up there, but things continue to be on schedule. Any other committee reports? Great. We'll move on to presentations and discussions. Update on the safe reopening plan for the fall. Dr. Adley?
So, we've had two meetings with the State Department last week and this week, so the reinstated their weekly meetings for health and safety. And just as it was last year, a little bit, by the time we even get to the table, things have changed and most of you here in the audience and certainly our board members are aware of the CDC recommendation that all children in the schools wear masks. So, the COVID metrics, this is for summer school. We haven't had any cases at this particular time. In Connecticut, now this goes through seven town, so you can see the sort of, at the time, July 10th, sort of the cases have dissipated and they tend to be, the most recent one tends to be down in the northeastern corner. This was done through June 2021 because the time is only reinstating that they started to do it monthly and they're only reinstating this week, you know, a weekly feedback. So, we'll get the weekly feedback this particular week, but you can see that they had dwindled down to minimal numbers. I'll just go back for a couple of talking points. So, we did have the meeting with the CD, Connecticut State Department of Education and the Department of Public Health. So, a couple of, just sort of cutting the chase a little bit. The mask requirement is still in place from the State Department of Public Health and the State Department of Public Education, State Department of Education. They will say that they will continue to have prizes around mask wearing. I will say this, and I certainly understand people on both sides, but it's good that the kids are already coming back to school, period, right? Albeit, I would wish we wouldn't be wearing masks, but again, I'm not an advisor in that regard. So, the requirement is still in place for Connecticut as of today to continue to wear masks, and that's the current intention unless they change it in the next couple of weeks. I'm not too sure they will here just given the CDC's recommendations that come in line, but some things have, there's some other strategies that have been helpful to us. Cohorting is minimal, if at all. The spacing between the children is three feet, if you can do that. Lunches can get back to some sense of normality, right? If you don't want to disrupt PE and other instructional areas, you can do that. So, you try and incorporate that in the spaces that you have. So, those are a couple of things that mitigation strategies that have been sort of lax a little bit. The cleaning procedures, the sort of back off, all of those requirements or the major requirements, we've done a lot of additional cleaning, a lot of school work. So, really, you're really down to now regular sort of cleaning schedule that we would do ordinarily. So, those are a couple of, those are a couple of the outcomes of the day. Clearly, those students who have been vaccinated, they will not need to quarantine. The quarantining would apply to the three, like a three feet radius. There was one exception, at least three feet of physical distance when feasible. And if I can get to the three feet exception for it, there was one three feet exception that did not apply to, to adults. As at the back. Yes, student three feet or more from another student diagnosed with COVID do not need to quarantine as long as they remain asymptomatic and mask wearing use at the time. So, that will be helpful to some degree, obviously, and the reduction to three feet is actually helpful. That's kind of what we've been doing. The plan that we have at the moment doesn't really, this doesn't really change that too much in the sense of some of, do we have to do other things? Not certainly significantly at this particular point that would require us to change that particular plan, but we're just gonna have to wait and see regarding the mask. At this point, I did have a meeting today with our medical advisors and they're on a wait and see scenario at this point. I think there may be some merit to actually seeing what actually does happen under these particular scenarios, but for now, the masks are gonna be required and there'll be further update to come down the line and over the summer. And we're into August really next week at this point, so, but these meetings will be weekly and we'll see what comes of that. Most of superintendents are just processing this at the moment, the districts. I can open that up for a question if you would like to do that.
Sure, I think we'll stay on that topic. Dr. Adley, could you talk a little bit about, is there any listening that's done at the state level from the local districts about more local control and working with our local health officials on these decisions? Or is it really top of the house, state level, and they're not necessarily interested in going down the path of working with local districts and local communities to put that decision-making there?
So, there's certain districts, superintendents and so on have taken sort of different positions on this. I will say in general, the message that has gone to the State Department of Public Health, you might not like this, but the message that has gone to the State Department of Public Health and the Connecticut State Department of Education from the teachers' unions, from the superintendent's unions, from the boards of education, has all been not to do the local control, make a decision for the actual state itself so that it doesn't get into situation of one time doing another thing, another time doing another. I think that's honestly the message that has been conveyed by that collective group of stakeholders as opposed to the message that you might be suggesting.
Good. Thank you, Dr. Adley. I'll open it to questions. Mrs. McCammon?
Dr. Adley, you may not know the answer to this, but are vaccination rates fairly even across the state?
I won't know across the state. I will say I heard a vaccination rate of nearly eighty, ninety or something. What I got today from the public health, our public health director was that our students are around about eighty, seventy-nine, eighty, and we, the students in that age group actually leave the state in vaccination rates.
Mrs. Parent?
Again, just building on that, just think that it's important just to note, as someone did in public comment, that while that is really high, that is high of the eligible people that can be vaccinated. A different topic, has there been any questions or ideas raised about the difference between secondary level versus the elementary level? You know, vaccinated, high schoolers tend to be vaccinated. Could there be any wiggle room there or is it a one lump sum?
I think that has been, on the meetings, that has been the topic of conversation for the superintendents and districts that want to do that and want to have some, yeah, some flexibility around the fact that our older kids are vaccinated and so on and so forth, right? So, that has been the discussion, but I think those various groups have coalesced to a different sort of position at the end of the day.
Mr. Brown?
Thanks, Alan. Just following up on that, you said, I believe you said it was the superintendents, it was the teachers' union, and there was another group that's sort of been advocating we should do everything in one.
Connecticut Association of Public Schools, superintendents, CAPS.
I guess the question is, has anyone gone and advocated a different position on behalf of the parents or advocated on behalf of the kids who are wearing masks to a different position that you're aware of?
So, we have, I know there's some parents have actually asked for me for, who could I go to? And we have said we'd go to the State Department of Public Health and the State Department of Education and pass on contact information that they're gonna actually, they're gonna actually send in some information or write requests, whatever they want.
And then I guess just a quick comment too. I know we've had discussions about sending a letter from this board. I think that if this isn't the time to bring it up, but I think that's now more important now that I'm hearing that voice is not being heard at the state level. I'd certainly like to get our input up there.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mrs. Akman?
So, may I just suggest that we be careful anecdotally that we're hearing those are the positions we take. I think as a board, it's important for us to be informed. So, if any of those groups have taken positions, if you could provide that to the board, because what we're hearing now is, I think they've taken that position. We don't really know why they've taken that position. So, before as a board, we react, I'd like to read those positions so I understand it. So, if this board is to comment, I'm fully informed.
There are no official written communications.
Okay, so then, so then I think we have to be really careful saying that we are speaking for any of these groups. We may choose to speak as a board or not, but I don't, I don't want to put words in other groups' mouths. If CAPS wants to make a statement, I'm happy to read it and decide whether we agree or disagree with it. If the teacher union wants to do that, same thing, but until I have those, I don't think that we can opine on their position unless they've taken one.
But what you're saying is, can we confirm if anyone has made a stated position or it's all just kind of through the course of conversation at this meeting? Nobody's out there with a position?
No, but I'm pretty confident of my statement I made.
Sure. Okay. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I would just follow up if, you know, and again, whether it's every comment or most comments, but it seems if people are not hearing the local control being emphasized, and I think that I'm hearing from this board and have heard in our past meetings, that's important to us, and I know as a board member, I think it's important to me and I'd like to make sure Hartford hears it. So, I don't think we need to counter an actual tally of who said what, when. I think that that's the message we want to take forward to Hartford and they're not hearing it. It's all the more reason we should do it more soon and more boldly.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Seeny?
I think our statement can be very simple in that there was a great framework in the back-to-school plan that the state outlined. They set frameworks for the entire state in terms of level of infection and then instructed the locales to basically look at their local data and then, you know, the administration to make decisions about back-to-school. And so, I think if we were to take the position, when we think of local control, it's not the Board of Ed saying, you know, masks off, not at all. It's to adopt the same framework to use that local data to inform not only the administration but our local health officials in order to make that determination. It worked brilliantly for this district in that, you know, we were able to get our kids back to school much sooner than other districts. I think it's really important that, yes, we live in a region and that, again, took into account the regional debt. So, if there's a way we can craft a message to advocate to adopt a very similar model, I think that would work favorably where we're not making the medical decision, if you will, right? Data will show and then you'll have your same medical authorities to rely on for guidance.
Mrs. Parent?
I am not comfortable sending a message without hearing directly from medical professionals, directors from Darien. I mean, I'm not again sending message, but I would like to hear from medical professionals first. Because I think it's public health.
What more would you like to hear from them?
I would just like, because I don't know enough, I'm not a doctor, I am not a epidemiologist. I need information about what this new variant is doing, what happens when, to the younger kids, is it affecting younger kids, is it not affecting kids? I just, I would like to hear from professionals before I take a stand.
Great. Mr. Brown?
So, I guess just reacting to that comment, I mean, we're not accountants, but we do the budget every year, so I don't understand why we would have to be doctors. I think we're talking about having a framework, as Mr. Seeny said, that really works locally. And I think even just looking at the latest CDC guidance, there's hotspots, there's high, there's severe. We're in a medium zone. So, local control, what would be coming top-down from the CDC naturally, really shouldn't apply here. And I think that's a good model and something we should look at within the state. I don't think having top-down from the state being opposed to what we have here in Darien versus what's in, say, New Haven, just to pick an example, necessarily applies. There's that flexibility in the national model. I don't see why that's wrong to have as we figure out how we're gonna move forward here in town to have that local control and that local data to drive our decision-making.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mrs. Akman?
Dr. Adley, has our, have our medical advisors or the local department of health taken a position on this at the moment?
So, they have advised today that we have to wait and see, as we continue to have these meetings. So, they haven't indicated that we're gonna go in any direction beyond this, beyond what has been recommended.
So, we don't have a recommendation from our local? If we were to put forward something on local control, we don't actually at this moment have a framework or a recommendation from our medical professionals, professionals to do so?
Correct.
Okay.
But I would say the conversations I would have would lean towards, again, I don't want to speak for them, I am speaking for them a little bit given I had a meeting today, but I'd be surprised if they were to go against the recommendations of the State Department of Public Health.
Do, Mr. Seeny?
Again, I don't, I think what we're advocating is for the State Department of Public Health to allow for local control in the same framework. So, I just want to be very clear. I'm not advocating State Department of Local Health tells us masks and we say no masks. By no means am I going in that direction. It's to advocate for a policy and a platform that worked brilliantly for this district in another format, and that's what I think the succinct letter can state. I don't need a medical advisor to tell me any differently. I want their input ultimately based on, you know, that framework.
Mrs. Parent?
I was just, to clarify my position, I agree with you, John. I, I am for local control would be, but I need to be, if that comes down, then I need the medical professionals.
Right. No, thank you, Mrs. Parent. Mrs. Seiny?
And for me, I suppose I see it as two issues. Local control is not synonymous with unmasked. Local control is we make our decisions. So, I'm for that. As for making a medical decision, I would rely, if we've got local control, that would be Dr. Adley in conjunction with our medical professionals. I agree.
Well, I think Mr. Seeny somewhat outlined it, and if we had that framework in place that we used for in-school hybrid versus out of school and base that on the information from the Health Department, that is a framework that would work. It's proven to work for us before, so, all right. So, is there consensus, I can, as a takeaway, look to organize thoughts around a communication that expresses those thoughts around local control? I think in somewhat of that framework that you outlined and, you know, we'll, we'll come back and socialize it with the board to make sure we're all in agreement. And Dr. Adley, maybe we can have as a takeaway to talk and make sure our local health officials understand what we as a community and as a board, we'd just like to get our thoughts out there around this. Does that make sense? Mrs. Akman?
What are, what is that consensus? What is that message we're sending?
That I think we'd like local control in conjunction with our health officials in a framework that worked while we were going through COVID in terms of, are we hybrid? Are we in person? Are we out based on the local health metrics? Is that kind of a summation, Mr. Seeny?
Yeah, and I would suggest we draft something or you draft something, Mr. Chairman, and circulate it before the next meeting and we'd have a vote on the communication.
And I, and I would welcome, as we go through this process, input, input from everyone. You're looking, you're not there yet, Mrs. Akman, in terms of-
I'm just trying to get clear on what we're asking and I want to make sure that we're clear on what we're asking. So, for instance, if what we're saying is we'd like to make this in conjunction with local medical officials, when our local medical officials say, I'm only going with the state, have we put ourselves in a quagmire where we want local control, our medical officials are telling us we're only going with the state and where do we go with that? So, I want to make sure that we, I think this is actually a conversation with the medical professionals. the medical professionals. Are they, are they willing to join us in this pursuit? Because we can't do it without them.
Right. And I think that would be a takeaway.
And I think the question is, are we willing to do it with the superintendent? Because at some point, if the Department of Education says, you must follow the Department of Health, and our local officials in the Board of Education say, we want local control, we've created another situation, and we're out of impasse. So I think, I see people shaking their heads. I'm trying to think of, let's get clear on what we're asking. Let's make sure that the people involved in what we're asking agree to that ask and proceed, if we choose to proceed. But I, I don't think you can do this in asylum.
Agreed. Mr. Brown.
So my thought with that is that last year, we had a framework, we had numbers, we had certain rates where we were going to close or open or do different things. We had decisions made around vacations. We didn't always follow exactly what the recommendations were. We overrode, and we made decisions locally based on people's perception and inputs of other substantive changes of what was going on in the community. So we've had that framework, we've had local control, we've exercised it. You know, so I don't understand why we'd be against having the framework. Again, we can always bury that in terms of what's going on locally, and as Mr. Seeny pointed out, we had very good success. I guess there is a possible scenario where our local people ignore the data, ignore the framework, and just say we're doing what we're hearing from the state. I guess that's impossible, but I don't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't not follow this because of the exception.
But I think they're all valid points. I think that is the question, and that is the point. We can say we want to work within this framework, we want to mimic almost what we did while we were through COVID. But at the end of the day, if the local health officials say, we're going by the state, if the superintendent says, we're going by the state, then we're, then we're nowhere, so to speak, in terms of, you know, we're not going to overrule our local health officials or the superintendent based on guidance from the state.
I'd rather have somewhere be a possibility.
Yes, I don't disagree.
I have to make a decision.
Right.
If that understood.
No, absolutely.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, I'm just lobbying the state to make a change to their policy. If they don't make a change to the policy, all this is a moot point. Okay? I mean, we're going right to the state and asking them to change their policy to allow for local decision-making. If that doesn't change, then this is a moot conversation. But we should advocate that message on behalf of our community to the state, and that's all I'm asking.
Dr. Adley, will you be able to support that message as a superintendent of schools?
I don't know if I, I honestly don't know the qualification in the sense of the medical background to advocate for that. So I would need to take other consultation with the medical advisors too, because, well, I guess I'll have to ponder.
Well, I'd like to get clear. Because I just think we need to know what we're entering. I don't think this is making our decision. And I don't actually think what Mr. Seeny has outlined is an impossible path to go down. But my question to you, Dr. Adley, is can you support us as a superintendent of schools? Should we go down this path? I'd like to know if we're testifying in Hartford, whether our superintendent can sit next to us?
As long, as long, oh, well, as long as the final decision and that is a medical decision, yes.
Okay, because I feel like that's a change from last meeting. So that's, that's a change from your position last meeting. So I'm, I just would like to know where we are if we're drafting.
Well, I'm not going to advocate for anything that, that doesn't have the stamp of approval of medical officials. If the State Department of Public Health says, your medical advisors in your local community, based on the numbers and metrics, so what, they're, they can make a decision, then okay, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Great. Any other questions? Do you want to continue with this update, Dr. Adley?
So the remote learning, so I did hear a announcement this morning that sort of tweaked my memory a wee bit, and my intuition was, wait a minute, I'll have to follow up on that, because it was mentioned about remote learning. The remote learning that we would be doing would be, currently, if, if we needed to be quarantining, we would provide that as an option. That's kind of what we have in the plan at the moment. That's kind of what is outlined by the State Department as a, 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 a good way of, a feasible way to continue the education. They did publish a notice today, information about remote learning, which they were saying that they were going to study the remote learning and then by the fall of 2022, come out with recommendations about remote learning, because the state has now sort of taken the position, we don't think remote learning is the way to go for, for standard education. But then what, then how do we use it? In the past, they have used it for snow days and so on and so forth, right? So they're going to come out with recommendations for how boards of education to develop policies around what remote learning could look like, might look like in a school system. And so they have an action group working on that, so it's going to take them a year to do that. However, they did say in there that any remote learning, I don't know if it was just off, just off the cuff remark, would not count for one of the 180 days, which that's problematic, because they issued information last year that it would count towards 180 days. Currently, we have in the calendar two days for snow days, and then the rest made up. So I have to verify with the state as of this morning, as to that you said something online. I don't know if you meant really what you did say, because we couldn't do that, right? That just changes things for it. We may have to make a change at least to the calendar in terms of how those days, how are we going to use those days? Are we going to use snow days? Are we going to do remote learning days? Or are we back to what we normally did before? Because that, again, contractual staff.
Isn't it though, does the state realize that there's the possibility or the need based on COVID cases and quarantining, or children have certain needs that may be the need for remote learning?
I, I think they're, they're willing to thread the needle on that one. But, but actually, full days of remote learning for everyone. Did they say today, it was, it was, it wouldn't be counted, which is, I tend to rationalize that. So I have to call them and ask them for a follow-up.
Okay.
Yep. And the American Rescue Act is the same, as the board has seen before. We've got another $720 that I think we put into, is it ventilation, Richard? We put that into ventilation. But that's, we're hiring for these positions, I think you know that, and they're on their way at the moment.
So any questions or comments around expenditures or anything? So just to recap, before we move on to the next section, my takeaway will be to work with Dr. Adley, work with the local health officials, and give them a sense of what the board is thinking about from a communication standpoint, kind of based in the framework that we used throughout COVID, where we worked in conjunction with and went by what our local health officials said in terms of where our caseload was, and kind of made those local decisions. But I think we all have to have the realization at the end of the day that if the state is going to mandate masks, that our local health officials and our superintendent are going to get behind that local mask mandate. But would like to at least put forward a communication that we, we've done this in the past successfully from a remote, from a hybrid, from an in-person, managing locally. And there hopefully are a lot less cases than there were, who knows? But that's kind of the essence of the communication we'd like to get up there. Does that make sense, everyone?
So you would make a draft, and then we'd vote as a board at the next meeting?
Yes, and subject to any other thoughts or ideas as we go through this process. Mrs. Parent.
Just as a point of, I think our next meeting is the last week of August, correct?
We may have to do something sooner than that, if we all agree this is, once we come, once I come back to the board with an understanding where the local health department is, we may have to do something before then. All right? Okay. Thank you. Moving along, first reading and discussion on proposed draft in district goals for 2021, 2022.
So thank you for your feedback at the last meeting. I was trying just to get a wee sense of, given the history that has taken place around board goals. So apart from last year, they've been of a departmental nature. And last year, they changed a little bit, based on COVID. And given that the strategic plan has been adopted, given some of the priorities in the district, and given the self-evaluation we went through, I've tried to keep it at a, a higher level. Clearly, there's strategic work and measures to be played out in these, which I have done. Distribute some of these.
Sure.
And Stein, if I get to the end and there's more, would you mind just, please? So clearly, this is, this is a lot to process just in one night, but in one reading. So I'm sure we're not going to be doing that. But just to give you a wee sense, the support, the teaching and learning through the district's Safe Return Plan, as we've just discussed, we're not out of the woodshed. So with the board's assistance and guidance on those issues, but we also have to promote teaching and learning through the actual process. And so these goals, the strategic work sort of supports that, that goal. The overseeing the implementation of the district's strategic plan, I do see a governance issue for the board clearly around the strategic plan. I was holding myself accountable and the, and the district administration accountable for the implementation of this. That's a governance issue, I feel. And so there's a reciprocal process there of supporting the things and also accountable. So try to, it's sort of, there's nothing perfect here. And certainly, I'm open for suggestions over the next, before, for August meeting, if there's any suggestions that you would like to consider or for implementation. The elementary school building projects, the three elementary school building projects are obviously up and running, and we would like to end up where those projects are approved by the State Department of Education. And the assistance, you can see how I sort of mentioned some assistance that the board can provide in particular areas. This is one where I sort of thought that we, we sort of talked about this, we have talked about it a wee bit. It has continued to be a district priority, and it also came out in the self-evaluation of the audit process to complete that process. So again, you can, you can decide to take some of these out, because now that's not high enough level for me. I included the district communications, because there was much discretion aligned that. So I tried to delineate some of the, the themes and thoughts that I took away. And then increased engagement and professional development. That is simply a board self-improvement goal. Now, you could say, well, I don't think that really fits in there. I'll take that out, we'll still work at it, but that's okay too. I just tried to capture some of the priorities, both from a very high level and also right down to sort of, sort of self-improvement level. So with that, I'm happy to open up for discussion or thoughts or comments.
So clearly, so first reading from the memo that Dr. Adley sent out, and then he's provided more detail based on some questions and comments from members of the board since the package went out, which I appreciate. So I'll open up to any comments or questions. Mrs. Parent.
Just, this is a lot to dig in as a first reading now. How do you want us to go for, if we have questions or comments? Do you want us to email the chair and you before our next meeting? Is that how we should operate?
That's fine. Yeah, as you go through this, I think just provide the feedback to myself and Dr. Adley. Mrs. McCammon.
First of all, thank you for providing the additional detail. It's helpful to see exactly how you would define some of these goals and how we think about it. What I like about this document is that it, it helps us see very clearly some touchpoints between administration and the board. And defines some of the things that the work, the work that the board as an organization is taking on a little bit separately from some of the things that administration is taking on. It's nice to see that captured and described here. I think since the strategic plan very clearly sets out the work of the district, it doesn't make sense to replicate that work in a year-over-year goals and objectives. So I do like, this is a, this is a different type of document. So, you know, more specifically, I think my question would be, first off, I like it, but my question would be, in terms of reporting on the strategic plan, that sort of will take the place of what we typically used to do with goals and objectives. Are you looking to do that quarterly? What are you thinking about?
So the board can certainly ask for a different variation of what I put down, but I put down for fall, winter, and spring progress reports on particularly the strategic plan, but also on all of these.
Thank you.
So if the board, if members of the board felt that some of the feedback I'd like to hear is, you know, goal, whatever, number four, I don't really like that at all as a, as a big, high-level goal. Or if there's, if there's strategic work that you think we would like to fit in or kick out, that's okay too. Those ideas are well received, as will be any other sort of measurement that you want to consider.
Okay, Mrs. Ackman.
So I agree with Mrs. McCammon that I like this document. And I agree with Mrs. Parent, it's hard to receive it at this point in time. We're being asked to approve the goals and objectives the last week in August, because we're seeing them now. That's, we're approving them in school starting, so the backup here was really essential for like a robust conversation tonight. We only had the, the major goals. So, Duke, if we're going to call a special meeting on a draft, we may want to think about everybody's time, but goals and objectives might, usually we do do this in public, we discuss it. This is a great place for public input and reactions, what the school district's goals are, do they feel like it's been captured? I would agree that it's important to overlay it, but not replicate it with the strategic plan. But I do think we have a time issue, because usually we use the summer to kind of get up and running on these goals. And since we haven't approved them, and we're really not able to discuss them in depth tonight, maybe if we are doing another meeting, goals and objectives might need to show up.
Agreed. I think as you read through it, the one thing, Dr. Adley, I was trying, literally just ran out of time, but I, I also, there's a way, I was trying to true it back to the strategic plan, and what was year one, what was year two. So it probably does, but that's what I was trying to take and tie it to myself. So, Mrs. Stein.
So would you rather have actual comments later?
I think if there's any high-level comments that can guide the administration this evening, and then I think it's important, as you absorb it, to provide those comments to myself and Alan, we'll, we'll make sure it gets out to the, the whole board. And then I think to, you know, some comments that have been made, we might have some more work to do in August in terms of an additional.
I have sort of, mine is high-level-ish. I sent the email in asking for more detail and talked about referencing our self-evaluation. And a big part of that was talking about academic rigor and maintaining academic excellence. And I see that sort of in that goal one. But when I look at the goal one, the definition, it's kind of prescriptive and feels very COVID-related to me, related to safe return of schools versus some of these under the strategic work to me are regular operations, maybe curriculum and instruction. So I would ask you to look at maybe either separating it into two different or a sub-goal. But it, to me, that's sort of, I bring it up because we have to get back to pushing this district forward and outside of COVID. And that was sort of what my email was asking for. So I would just ask you to take that lens when you look at it.
We could split that way.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Probably consensus to split it. I think that's a really good point. Any other thoughts or comments at a high level? Good? All right. Thank you, Mrs. Stein. Next up, further review and possible action on reciprocal agreement for use of the facilities with the YMCA. Mr. Rudel and Dr. Adley, thank you, Rich and Dr. Adley, for all the work that you've done on this. There's a guest in the audience, Jennifer Gardner, who's the director over at the Y. Thank you for coming by. I just want to say, I know personally, and I think from a board standpoint, this is an important partnership, it's an important relationship, it's been a longstanding one. It's awesome within a community to have a YMCA that has an incredible facility, an incredible staff, and just an incredible connection to the community. From folks that sit on the board to just all the activities and events and school-type stuff that goes on there. I know from personal experience over the years. I need to get there more myself. Thank you. Now that the hours are back to normal. So we appreciate the partnership. I wanted to make that clear. We look forward to maintaining the partnership and moving it forward. It's an important one for the community. Good.
I'd like to recognize, as Gardner, Jennifer has been a wonderful partner last year, particularly through all of this COVID stuff that we've been dealing with. They're all our kids at times, that's kind of what we've been trying to do. And it just, it hasn't been easy to, with closing down the rental of the schools and so on. It's a tough, a tough thing to navigate. And I want to thank Jennifer for her patience and understanding and partnership and as I sort of try to navigate that. we sort of try to navigate that. So there were questions that the board had, that we went back and got some information from, from both Mr. Manfred Dona and also from Jennifer, and we did make a recommendation. This is part of, part of the school system, part of the time, it would be nice to keep the kids, there, I don't think you can, well, there, there is something nice about being able to keep the kids in town, in our home pool, where the banners are, where the blacks are, where everything is, right? So with that, obviously, there, there continues to be a financial discretion, but I think that there's much value added to that, if we all work that out. And it's with that, we made a recommendation to enter into a written agreement. We made the recommendation, just like the board, it wants to be assertive in terms of some of our findings, and so what would we recommend around that? So we're going to just sort of walk through some of the finances and some of the aspects of the agreement, just to give the board a little sense of what we, what we recommended the last time and where we are now. I do think that the board, the board get at the worksheet? Okay, can you just walk through that? Thanks.
Before we get into the worksheet, we did want to follow up. We did reach out to Chelsea Peers. While the rate would be lower, they can't accommodate the needs of the district. Availability will only be after eight o'clock at night, which isn't feasible for the teams. We did want to highlight, there are reciprocal agreements in other neighboring districts, such as Newken and Wilton. So one of the things that we're recommending after speaking to the Y was, they did indicate that they could run their program with less hours than was reported in the 1920 school year. So if you recall at the last meeting, looked at about 3,500 school hours, and based on the usage, that would be just shy of $300,000. They came back with a number that they could run their program at just over 2,900 hours, so that would bring it down to about $206,000. The Y is able to accommodate a swim team on Sundays, a slightly different hour, from seven to nine as opposed to eight to 10 in Greenwich. If you add in the cost, the differential between the two is a little over $22,000, which is about 12 and a half percent. So what we would recommend is that we allow a reciprocal agreement at the 2,920 hours. If it exceeds 2,920 hours, we would just bill for whatever the rate is at the location that they're using for the hour above the 2,920 hours. We would charge custodial overtime fees. What's really important is obviously the more time they use on Sundays, the more expensive custodial overtime fee is, which actually would pay double time. So the more Saturday hours for them would be more advantageous. We would expect that 2,900 hours, depending on that mixed use of hours, would be probably around $27,000, again, depending on the use of Sundays. And then the idea would be that we would be able to use the Y facilities for boys' swimming and girls' gymnastics, and they would have access to our facilities, all seven facilities, the exception of Ox Ridge in this coming school year, given construction for the Y basketball program. And then the final would be, back in 2016, which was included in the memo at the last board meeting, was the recommendation to reduce the summer fee from $45 per camper to $27, which is the in-town youth sport and community fee. So this would result in a loss of about $3,700, but we would recommend implementing that, that offset with the increase in custodial overtime. It would still put the board about in a good position. I would recommend annual renewal, so if we look forward to a year and maybe it's not working for us, or it's not working for the Y, you have the ability to determine that.
Thank you very much. Thanks for all the work behind the scenes, Jennifer. Thank you for partnering, and I know that this goes back in history, so it's always interesting to find documents and memos and letters, but everyone's done a good job kind of painting a picture that, I know as long as I've been on the board, I haven't seen this full of pictures of this, so I appreciate that. So Rich, just to be clear, the, the reduction to the 2920 hours, that's specific to the basketball program?
It is. So when we met with Y, they actually, you know, came back and gave a breakdown of potential hours needed at all schools, and it came to about 2,920 hours, so we're basing that threshold based on what was submitted.
Great. And there's no, or because we missed a year with COVID, but there's, what's the impact with Ox Ridge being offline?
So you'll likely see more usage at the other schools.
Okay.
So you'll just see the hours kind of shift away from Ox Ridge. So, you know, typically they'll use all five elementary schools, but it might be more, let's say, at Tokenique, or it might be more at Holmes, you just won't have that at Ox Ridge.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Maroney?
Do we have any contract that keeps us in place for the Boys and Girls Club this fall, or will this be in effect in a few weeks?
So we would have to make a decision relatively soon, by early August, whether or not we want to continue using Boys and Girls Club in Greenwich, or if we'd like to ship them to the lab.
Pending discussion, we have potential action this evening, or we may need more thought and put it on the agenda of our special meeting. Mrs. Ackman?
Special meetings getting really, really full. First, might I recommend a rolling contract, not an annual contract, because if you, if you terminate your contract and there's an upcoming season, those kids are getting ready and, and they're preparing, and you would have to announce to parents and kids that they don't have a team, if we didn't have a pool. So I think we should look at a rolling contract, rolling annual contract that we renew at a certain rate. Secondly, do we charge, I know this is an indoor facility, so we'd be charging overtime on a weekend, an indoor use, usually with basketball, so we're charging custodial overtime on the weekends. Are we doing the same on our outside fields with custodial overtime?
No.
So I think to Mr. Seany's point the other week about equity between sports, we may need to look, should we be charging outdoor sports custodial overtime? I mean, if we're going to start charging the Y that, I think we should just look, what's the best practice for the district? And secondly, and Mr. Ruhl, you may have just answered it, is it that the Y came back with 2,900 hours roughly that they, real usage, or are we anticipating come basketball season and hearing from a line of parents that they no longer have teams or availability?
So they, they did come back with the 2920 hours. They do typically request more than that, and then things get canceled in case, let's say, there's S and Ts going on or other things going on in the school, which makes it not available, but they did come back with the 2,920.
So they can run a full complement of their program with the outlined hours? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Hey, Rich, without going too far down the accounting rabbit hole, how are we going to see this track overtime going forward? Is it a footnote, or has this recognized, and then it's based on the contract rate, or are we going to be able to track market rate as well, or how? I don't, I don't know what best practices.
So in, in terms of the custodial overtime, currently in the board's budget, RC 11, there's an allocation of about $33,000 for custodial overtime. So if this gets approved, we would record the revenue against that overtime, so what you'd see is a net to hopefully zero, and then that budget becomes available for use elsewhere. If they exceed the 2,920 hours, and we would have to bill them, let's say, for 30 hours, you would see an increase in your building rental revenue account in RC 11.
So I, I guess I was asking more, I wasn't specific, I apologize. The in-kind, how do we actually track that in that relationship, since we're not exchanging money?
Sure, so there's no financial record, we would have to track the hours, and we would track that at school due, but we would not have to re, there's no in-kind expense recorded or revenue recorded on your books?
So when we get our big books every year, it's not just billed to your show?
No, I mean, what you'd end up seeing is the decline in custodial overtime in RC 11.
But I think to your point, Mr. Brown and Rich, I don't know, in other agreements, it might be good to have some sort of footnote, you know, understanding that within the financials, that there is an in-kind agreement.
Just a memo every year.
Yeah, I mean, I could certainly put a, you know, narrative in the budget book or something.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Mrs. McCammon?
I am in, thank you for us off, to everybody for all the work that went into this. I do think that we all at this table and beyond feel very strongly about the relationships between the school district and our community partners. Part of my question is, I do agree that we want to be looking towards equity, whether we're looking at custodial fees or, or summer camp charges, et cetera, and I'm glad some of those have been adjusted. We are in a position where we are still giving something of a subsidy, and I can foresee other community organizations having feelings about that. How are we planning to talk to other community organizations?
Well, the, other than it's a longstanding practice, the board has, we have a memorandum of understanding or an agreement, a written agreement for it, or if you wanted to go into policy, you can go into policy, that's another option, but I think we'll be telling a wee bit of the history and that there's a written record of, of the agreement that it's, that we've entered into.
I, I do think, Mrs. McCammon, it's a good point, I think it was brought up on this side of the table too. I think at this point, I think there is some timings of the essence with this as we move forward and move out of COVID. I do think there's further work and further discussion to be had with the other teams and other costs associated with it, and maybe this starts as a basis for furthering those conversations or board work that has to be done around that in conjunction with the administration. But I'd like to, in a way, separate the two, so we can continue our partnership with the Y, make sure kids understand what they have going and what's available to them in the fall, but I think we would all acknowledge there's more work to be done around the other sports and fees and charges around that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Seany?
Yeah, and I would just put my personal opinion that this is a strategic relationship. Not a lot of other organizations have a pool to offer our swimmers and diving team. The fact, you know, that we're moving everything into consolidated facilities is awesome. I think there's a bit of a, beyond the strategic relationship, there's maybe we, as we think broader, a volume discount kind of concept. I mean, again, this is off the topic a bit, but I look at the fee schedule, we charge per hour within the schools, but per head or per child on the fields, and I, I just, I can't wrap my head around that. So again, not part of this decision, I know we should make a decision to move forward, I support it, thanks so much for all the work. Just to follow up with one last point, is there any bus savings from not removing from Greenwich to back to the lab?
No.
Other not using?
Individual transportation.
Mrs. Ackman?
So I would, to Mrs. McCammon, I would second Mr. Seany's point, there's very few facilities that have a pool, we don't have a swim team without a pool. So having kids who play all field sports, I, I understand some of the concerns, but swim team can't, and those kids can't practice what they know and love and what we say we want to put forward without a pool. Really, the only other corollary I could find that would be really close is ice rinks we might have to look at, because we don't have an ice rink in the high school either. But other than that, arguably, that facility is going to budgets and taxpayers and gifts and donations. So it's, I do think this is both a strategic, well-founded community relationship and also a necessary one, just pure fact of, you need pools, you need ice.
Thank you, Mrs. Ackman. So Mr. Maroney is head of facilities, you've heard ice rinks are needed and pools are needed.
Yeah, absolutely. Ski mountains, that one. Just to clarification, Mr. Seany's point, this, this will not change the dive aspect that's located in Y correctly, that will still be needed.
I'm sorry, the Greenwich.
Good, 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 good conversation as always. Is the board comfortable with moving forward on a motion to move this forward, so everyone can be comfortable with where we're headed? So I'll make a motion, do you have a motion, Dr. Ackman? I will make a motion to move forward with the YMCA proposal on a one-year rolling contract based on what's outlined by Rich Roodel. Jill, is anything you want to add there, or?
A one-year roll?
How do you want to, how do you want to phrase that, Rich?
Yeah, how do you want to phrase it?
Yeah.
So it would be an, an annual contract with rolling renewals, I think would be how we'd want to phrase it.
Okay.
So it would renew, we pick a certain date, whether it's April 1st or, you know, May 1st, however we want to phrase that, and then by that time you'd have an automatic renewal for the next season unless you give a certain amount of notice.
So what would be a good date to recommend, because I think that should be part of the motion?
Probably say April 1st.
April 1st? So we'll make a motion to put in place an agreement with the YMCA and the Darian Board of Education effective April 1st for the arrangement between the two organizations for use.
That's not effective.
No, no, not.
No, 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 no. First of all, I think we should ask the Y if April 1st is the appropriate deadline for their financial accounting as well. And then we just say an, an annual contract with, with a rolling renewal. And I think.
By April 1st.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, are we agreeing?
Just confirming what the motion, what I have written is, we have a motion to approve the YMCA proposal for an annual contract rolling, rolling renewals by April 1st.
Mr. Brown?
Do we need to have something with Greenwich in here, or is that being covered by the scope?
I think that's, that'll, you'll work that out within the agreement?
Okay.
Yeah, okay, good point.
And Jill, just to add to that, I think it's an agreement between the Darian Board of Education and the YMCA, because I, I think we both probably put some of this up, I don't know that this is what they were dying for, but we've gotten. Okay, I'm going to begin.
Thank you, Jill.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the agreement between the Darian Board of Education and the YMCA for an annual contract rolling renewals by April 1st.
Okay.
I would just call it the Darian YMCA.
Yeah.
Mrs. Stein, motion second. Mrs. Parent, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gardner, for all the help. Thank you, board, for all the conversation, and the administration for all the work behind Moving forward, update on enrollment for the 2021-2022 school year and possible action on utilization and budget control. Thank you, Jill, for organizing that motion.
Ready?
Thanks, yes.
So we enclosed the enrollment for fiscal year '22. Enrollment does exceed projections by 39 students K-12. Elementary enrollment is up 42 students, primarily at Ox Ridge, which makes up 39 students of 42. We're really seeing the growth almost across the board with the exception of fifth grade. Third grade, I believe it was third grade at 90 students, it was 11 above projection. Since the last enrollment report, the three things that have really changed is, Henley Kindergarten did add an additional student, creating the need for the budgeted fourth section. Tokenique third grade did lose two students, losing the projected fourth section, and then again, total K-5 enrollment increased by four students since the last report. So we did request at the last meeting the use of three budget control positions. The only change would be, would be Royal first grade instead of Tokenique third grade, so it would be Royal first grade, Holmes third grade, and Ox Ridge fourth grade, and then we are asking the Board of Education to set a total of 109 section K-5 of that one.
Thank you, Rich. Guess everyone's anticipating a new school at Ox Ridge, moving into the neighborhood. Board questions, comments? Mrs. Ackman?
So I have a question on our Tokenique loss of two students, thus losing the fourth section. I think we experienced this last year with Ox Ridge as well, and then the number went back up, and so what we could do at that point was put in an aid. Is the administration's recommendation really to lose this section or to go forward anticipating that two students is pretty close to the guideline? I mean, are we confident that with, with two below, that that's the position we want to be in, as these are guidelines? Because I, I do know parents will, I think we need, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a tough call, and we had to make it in different years, but it will most likely be a teacher's aid, we won't break a section should we gain these two students over. And I do know that I think ideally, everyone wants a teacher in front rather than an additional aid, as valuable our aids are in the classroom.
So as, as, as far as I can project, I speculate, yes, but I would also, I'm hoping that if for some reason, I would use three budget control, if for some reason I had to back for a fourth budget control, that that would still be, the board would still be open-minded to that after some freeze and there was an influx of significant number of students.
But it would be highly unusual for us to create a new class after the opening of school, we'd be hiring an aide rather than a teacher.
Yes, we wouldn't, right. Yes, I'm not talking, yes, I'm not talking. When we get into the, when we get into the school year, right?
So you would not recommend breaking that?
Not, unless it happens this month.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Ackman. Mrs. Parent?
I have a quick question, similar to Mrs. Ackman. I'm noticing that the Ox second grade and the Tokenique third grade are, everything else is within optimal range, but those two are in the high range. Are we comfortable that those are not in danger of getting larger?
So Tokenique, for example, has stayed relatively consistent, at least for the last week. There's still a month before school starts, so there is a potential that you could choose to come in, but based on what we've seen over the, at least the last consistent week of pulling enrollment data, we're comfortable.
I just want to make sure that we don't get into another Ox Ridge situation that we had this year.
Thank you, Mrs. Parent.
Well, we might. Right, so I don't want to, like, I just don't want to preclude.
But I think then, within the next week or two, we need to be cautious. I think we're better off with another teacher than an aide and going to another class. Mr. Brown?
But I think then, within the next week or two, we need to be cautious. I think we're better off with another teacher than an aide and going to another class.
Mr. Brown?
I guess that's what I'm asking.
Um, I guess you mentioned if something changes in August, that's why we put it to you and maybe to Marge. What, how quick or what's your window realistically if something happens in August? Are we talking 30 the last day or the, like, when? How quick would, could you guys react?
Well, we, it's not as if we haven't reacted before in terms of hiring people. Like, we don't want to do that, right? That's not, we certainly don't want to do that for, for students, parents, or the organization. But if, but if we had to, I think we would do that. If something happened before the next board meeting and I had to, for whatever reason, try and put something in place even before then, then I would do that. I would have a request of work to be come together in some capacity to do that.
So I guess if you follow the recommendations, it stands based on the information we had now, there would be time where you'd be able to react.
Yeah, like, the closer it gets, it may, the more problematic it becomes, but.
I think, I don't doubt there's a little bit of time and you can react. I think, Miss Zion, the challenge is fighting teachers, correct?
Right, and that, I mean, we're struggling anyway, and then their districts hold them 30 days. When do the elementary principals send the class lists out? So it's not, it's easy. It's just, we'll find a teacher. It's just.
So where, so the real issue you bring up is we're, we're at that 30-day mark in terms of if these districts hold their teachers 30 days. Then you're, you have a classroom without a teacher to start.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Akman?
Sorry, I'm thinking about how to word it. It's not, Mrs. McCammon, crazy. Might I motion that the board consider an open-up discussion on breaking an extra section on Tokenique in that third grade? I don't know if there's a second to the meeting. I may not.
Do you want to repeat?
The board open up discussion on creating a new, an additional section at Tokenique, given that they're only two off and we're 30 days out on the hiring. I was looking at that. So just conversation amongst the board. Did I think that's wise?
Good. Mrs. Parent?
Go ahead, Jill. Read your motion.
Oh, no, yeah, sorry, Jill. And then we have to vote on the motion.
So I have written, you have a, you have actually motioned to break an additional section in Tokenique and Sarah had, yeah, seconded. And then, then we discussed.
Yep, so we're open for conversation.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mrs. Parent.
So I mean, so I, when I did the math, actually, aside a little bit, but when you do these graphs, can you break out the average class size? I do every time I get one of these, I do it, and I would do a B's if I didn't have to. But I'm looking at the, just, we're talking about the third grade. There are, at Holmes, the average class size is 17.5, at Royal, it's 17.33. And if we broke again, what's 68 divided by 4? 17. So then we're, we're creating equity amongst the schools. So I would just be careful because I don't think we can guarantee that every year. And some years we really can't. But I think that we, we approved provisionally breaking this section last time. We lost kids, which is important information to know. I'm actually very comfortable when something decreases by like four or five. But two is a family moving in with twins.
Right.
You know, and that's exactly what happened at Oxford. So you can't predict it. This is not exact science. I'm not really saying that someone's right or wrong. But I do think we're still seeing turnover. I do think real estate agents are still reporting a busy market. I do think it's something worth considering for the board. And we should have a healthy discussion whether we want to do it so that in September, whatever we've done, we know what we've done. I think it's also important to say that Avalon is at Tokenique, too, and that's where the most stress tends to be transient. So that's.
Great.
Anyone else?
Any other further conversation?
So.
Mrs. McCammon?
The most comparable class I see is Royal at 69. I knew it's first grade, but and that we've moved up to four sections.
Different class size guideline.
I know.
Yes. Yes.
It's just a question. All right, so my, my hesitation would be we may have other classes. This is what we're looking at today. I get that. We could have other classes in the next three days. I'll admit I put my paperwork in, but I don't think I break anywhere.
Jill, give them a count right now.
I'm pretty sure we're saying. But, but I'm representative of the possibility that we could have shifts. So I hear you, and Oxford happened late, and I talked to a lot of parents about that. And at that exact point, we have to make a decision with the information we have at the moment in time that we have it. And so things could change at any, any after this. But this is traditionally one of these set sections, and we're so close that I, I think, you know, I'd be interested to hear from board members. This is exactly why we don't have a strict policy on this, that we have a guideline. It allows us a little bit of flexibility. So I'd love to hear from board members on it.
Thoughts or comments? Mr. Sein?
Well, I guess, one, I'd look back to precedent, what we've done on this in the past. Two, there are guidelines, and then we got a recommendation from the administration to follow those guidelines. I hear how the sensitivity, how close we are, but I also have a worry that, you know, we're pretty close in some other schools. So I would like, I guess my question is, since we're having this special meeting, I understand the sensitivity of hiring somebody, but can we put this off until that special?
I wouldn't want to put it off till the special meeting in terms of setting the, the sections and letting them use the budget control. But I think if we have to react at that special meeting by information we get within the next week or two, I think we should do that.
That, that's kind of where I was going. Yeah, sorry.
Okay.
Can't we watch it for a week and then, or is that not an option to see if it goes up or down in the next?
In other words, not set the sections tonight?
I would, well, no, can we set the sections before we keep Tokenique sort of on a watch?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yep.
We have, well, okay, that's the point. We have done it before, like with Dr. Brenner, I know we've done it before, but it was earlier. It was in, beginning of July.
Or we broke. Or we broke.
So I think the sense is we set, we set the sections, we set the use of the three from budget control and ask the administration to keep us in the loop on a daily basis. Keep me in the loop to see if we have to react to this. Mrs. McCammon?
So to that point, actually, I went back to see how we, the language for how we approved budget control in the past. In 2017, we approved up to three, so, or two or something. So we also have the option of approving up to four. That would give Alan the flexibility if he needs to make that call.
Yeah, and I, my memory is not as great as Tara's, and I just asked her. But I do remember at one point we authorized Dr. Brenner, because we were in the similar situation, to have the authority to break that section or add the section without a full, full board vote. So I would love to give Dr. Adley that authority.
Yeah, so that's how we did it. It said up to, and so we could say up to four.
I'm comfortable with that. Is the board comfortable with that?
Yeah. Yeah. So I can either amend the motion to keep your life simple. I, would you permit me to do that? I think it's a separate motion technically.
Do we have to do anything with your motion, Tara?
I think we take a vote.
We have to vote.
Okay.
Yeah. And vote, and then we can.
Okay.
So repeat the motion.
So we're going to vote. So the first thing we're going to do is, is vote on whether to break the additional section at Tokenique. Will likely fail, and then we'll make the motion to do up to.
Okay. So will you make your motion again, Tara?
No, I did, and it has a second, so we just need to vote.
Okay, so let's vote on Tara's motion. All those in favor of that motion?
I'll vote yes.
So that motion fails. So now Jill, if we'll move forward to the next motion.
So a motion to authorize the superintendent to utilize up to four sections of budget control as needed in the elementary schools. Yeah.
And set the total of 109 sections.
Yeah.
K through five.
Yeah.
So a quick discussion following up on that motion. Dr. Adley, does that?
We, we need, we need a, we need a second.
A second.
Oh, a second.
Does that work for you? Go to Ford.
Yes, that works. Yes, good.
Okay, thank you.
I figured he would speak up if it didn't, but thank you, Dave. So all in favor?
So, but if we set it at 109 and then use one for Tokenique, we're at 110.
Correct.
Correct. So how do we say?
Do we do up to?
Up to 110.
Up to 110 and up to four?
Just to be clear.
We can't do anymore out of money. We have no more money.
So Jill, do you want to read that back so we're clear?
Yeah.
Thank you.
With a motion to authorize release to the administration of up to four budget control positions in the elementary schools. And to set a total of up to 110 sections.
In the elementary schools.
You're good.
We're good. Katie Stein, motions, second. Mrs. Akman, all in favor? That is unanimous. All right, thank you for that good conversation. Thank you, Rich. Thank you, Dr. Adley. Just a word to the audience, anyone that isn't registered for school, please get your kids registered for school. Any brokers in the audience, please get that message out.
Oh.
Presentations and discussions. Update on the policy audit review. Mrs. Stein, Mrs. Zion?
All right, I'll, I'll briefly review the memo. I think everyone had a chance to read it. Marge started doing the crosswalk after our board retreat. And what we came to realize is that there are multiple repositories for old policies, and we're talking policies 1977 and even earlier, that we don't know what's really out there. So what we've come up with is an idea to batch repeal anything that is not housed on our website. Marge has already started the crosswalk to make sure that, you know, what we have on our website covers us. There are tweaks, there are things we need to update. But what we're asking the board to do is similar to what we did when Dr., when Mr. Chiketti came on the board. We did a big batch repeal that for summer to allow us the freedom to sort of start from scratch and make sure we're building exactly what we need for how we do business here. So that's the memo, and the plan would be if everyone is in agreement, we would do the batch repeal, I think, at the next meeting, Marge, right? And, and Marge and I would then start in earnest the crosswalking of the current policies on the website against the model policies with Shipman and Cave as well.
Good. Sounds like a plan. Thank you for all the work on that. Thoughts or questions around that? Good. All right. Thank you both.
Thanks.
Continuing, continued discussion on gifted program. Mr. Tranberg? Great presentation on that. Anything you wanted to, to add?
I would just add as a follow-up from the presentation, just some of our next steps. The first would be to update the website because the importance of clear communication came up several times throughout the presentation. And one of them was specifically related to the website, making sure that the processes are clear. The other was, based on the staff feedback and survey, there was some expression that the process for identification and servicing students wasn't clear. That is, however, something that our idea teachers do at October faculty meeting every year. So we're going to calibrate that presentation and make sure it's consistent across the schools. The other very important next step is to convene a district-wide committee to serve as a steering committee. And that would be made up of various stakeholders. And I would say the, the most pressing highlights that came across from my lens and in my discussion with my colleagues is the idea of math acceleration at the elementary level, the high school programming in general, specifically to think about expanding the program beyond students who are identified as gifted, but for students maybe through an application process who have a passion to really explore a topic deeply in their freshman year as an elective. The schedule in general, especially the middle school. And the other is the idea of school-wide enrichment. So how can we provide more enriching experiences for all students, not just those identified as gifted at the elementary level? So those would be the charges that, that I would extract from that presentation. But I'm glad for any additional comments of things to prioritize based on what you heard and what you read.
Okay, you really want to speak soon? Thank you, Mr. Tranberg. Again, great. There was a lot of good work done behind the scenes there, and thank you for the follow-up. Mrs. Parent?
Thank you. First, thank you for those ideas. And I think I would say that those are the highlights of what I pulled out of that wonderful presentation as well. It just, idea of timeline, timeline. So you're creating a steering committee. You'll come up with ideas to enact for the next school year, or what is that? What, what are you thinking your time will be?
Based on the item, like, things like communicating clearly can happen right away. But if we're making changes to how students access math curriculum, that obviously would be a year out as soon as that we would be able to do that. We also have a new principal at the middle school, as you know. So again, we can't really change the middle school schedule at this stage, but that's something that we can put into place. I also know that's been a part of the conversations for at least the past two years, if not prior to that, especially the idea of exploring electives. Because the, the idea of students accessing their gifted programming during lunch was a consistent concern that predates this presentation.
Do you plan to have students on that committee?
I would hope that that would, I would hope so. And I will say, I, my participation in this, a highlight of my participation was sitting in the focus groups and listening to the students articulate what the program means to them and how they have benefited from it. So their input certainly anecdotally meant a lot, and I think it's authentic. And those experiences are things we want to be able to, to replicate in maximum. So, yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Parent. Mrs. Akman?
I'm good.
You're good? Mr. Maroney?
Sorry, just wanted a clarification on this. So, because I have the same question, Mrs. Parent. So we're, we're talking about doing this, that we will be able to vote on it as a budget item, possibly in the spring of 2022, to make changes going for the fall of 2022.
So we would convene this committee early on. So if there were any budget implications, we would try to have them ready for that budget cycle. We're, in general, we're trying to move up some of those decisions for your approval that might affect the budget, especially related to course offerings. I'm thinking, we did have the conversation this year, as, as you remember, about the Achievers program specifically. And if there's going to be any type of expansion, that could have budgetary implications, so that would be there. And if not, that just means it pushes it another year out.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Maroney.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would also, I'd also just say that, in all transparency, the staff has to process these recommendations, too. This was, you may say it was done a month ago, but it's the end of school, and people have gone. So we need, we need time to actually process these recommendations with a lot of the staff. But ultimately, you will see it come through, changes through curriculum and through budget process if there's going to be changes. The question is, I often want the board make one update on this, or is it coming through with these new programs or other ways through the budget process enough? Whatever, whatever the pleasure is, we can do.
Good. Mrs. McCammon?
Is it possible to fold this into some of the strategic plan work that you already have? I know it wasn't identified there, but that could be a good place to provide a, a regular update. I, I understand that something programmatic or budgetary would require a different level of information. But in terms of governance and keeping a regular eye on it.
Currently, in the draft that you have tonight, one of the measures for the ensuring high levels of performance and student achievement and enhancing educational programs that support all learners, one of the measures would be identified and implemented recommendations on gifted program evaluation, which, which hopefully would be there at least those three times for those updates.
Thank you, again. Thank you, Mr. Tranberg. Mrs. Akman?
So however you best do it, absolutely. I think the board needs updates on this. Things like math acceleration, some of us have lived through several times. So I think that we need to hear about this regularly. And really, after you have your focus groups, because it feels like we have a presentation, we have possible recommendations, but we don't have recommendations to really consider yet.
Right.
We would, those would need to come back to the board because you are talking about curriculum changes. So I would leave it to the chair and the superintendent to find the appropriate place to bring it back. But I think if you're going to do things as we're kind of caring about tonight, the board needs to be updated on that.
Thank you, Mrs. Akman. That's a good point. Good. Any further questions or comments around the gifted program update? Thank you. Moving along, updated master agenda, February through August 2021. Should that be 2022?
This is just through this audit.
Yeah.
It's just one more meeting.
Right. Okay. Yep.
Well, now it's two more meetings.
What's that?
Now it's two more meetings. But gosh, your point is taken.
Yeah. Any further?
No, this is, I mean, I simply was recording a rolling record of what we are doing.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Okay. Then we move on to further discussion and possible action on proposed schedule of 2021-2022. 2022 regular Board of Education meetings and subcommittee meetings.
So on the Board of Education meetings, there are two dates that we'll just have to decide what to do with. One is the 22nd of February, which is the week of recess. I don't know if that's happened here before or not, but it's happened nice. I'll motion that we don't have a meeting that week, but anyway, you have to decide what we'd like to do. Would we want to do one meeting in February, or do we want to work around that? And the other one that's just a little bit up in the air is September 14th, whether that's going to be a primary or not. We've checked a couple of times and trying to get the answer to that. There's not a definitive answer yet. That was the date that was rolled out as a possibility to hold, and I just don't have a definitive answer back as to whether that's going to be the date or not.
So that may have to change.
You could prove it with, you know, you'll do a special meeting, then pencil it, do a special meeting if you had to, but.
Okay.
Yeah, it's happened before, and we either just change the meeting or change locations of meeting.
Yep. Good. Yep. Mr. Brown? Okay. Good. Any thoughts or questions, Mrs. Parent?
My question is about the February meeting. So do we know the budget calendar yet? Are we, is that, should we have two meetings in February? Is that, is that after we voted on the budget?
Yes, I think the budget votes the eighth. I think it's correct.
Now it would be.
Yeah, that was my only thought, is that we need, we need as many meetings as possible that we have to continue to work through the budget. So yes, Mrs. Ackman?
We've done this before. We just space it out after vacation. We don't have two meetings two weeks in a row. We spaced out after vacation. We've got three weeks.
So I would, I would.
This is pretty standard.
I would put on the calendar to have it the following week.
Yeah. Which is technically March 1st. Yeah.
Okay.
So then you're having two in a row, though. Then it'll be March 1st and then March 9th. You can always cancel.
Yep, depending on the agenda.
We can cancel vacation.
Yes. What's that?
We can cancel vacation.
So may I have a motion to approve the proposed schedule for regular Board of Education? Well, timeout. Let's, do we want to do two separate motions on the subcommittee meetings? Or all in one? Does it matter?
The calendar has amended?
Yep. So let's, I'll make a motion to approve the calendar as the, I will make a motion to approve the proposed schedule of regular Board of Education meetings for the 2021, 2022 school year as amended. Mr. Brown, second by Mrs. Stein, all in favor. That is unanimous. Now let's do a quick look at the draft monthly committee schedule for the 2021, 2022 school year. I think the only thing that's come up to me is the start time. I think it's been as early since I've been around as 7:30. It's moved to nine, it's moved to eight. Are we good with 8:30 in terms of most people's commuting schedules? All right. Any comments? Approve as presented. We have a motion to approve the monthly committee schedule for the 2021, 2022 school year as presented. Mr. Maroney, second by Mrs. Parent, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. We are moving to action items. Mrs. Zion, the P A R.
We're just in the middle of our usually busy summer hirings.
Good. Overall, how are things going, Marge, with hiring and good? All right. Any questions or comments on the P A R? We have a motion to move forward on the P A R. Mrs. Parent, second by Mr. Senior, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. And we will move toward Michelle. Are we ready for public comment?
Excuse me? Good evening. If you would like to speak during public comment, please click the participant's icon on the bottom of your Zoom screen. When it is your turn to speak, the facilitator will identify you and announce that you are unmuted for public comment. You will have up to three minutes to comment. Will you start with it?
Thank you, Michelle. We'll start with our friends in the audience first.
Hi. My name is Katie Loveland, and I live at 24 Maplewood Drive.
Could you just speak up just a little, Katie?
Sure.
Thank you.
Katie Loveland, 24 Maplewood Drive. This is not a planned public comment. I just wanted to respond. In full transparency, I live in the Oxford District, and I remember, as well as all of you do, what happened last year with the fourth grade. When I saw the meeting materials come out, I did notice that our incoming second graders are currently 11 above our projected, and that was already with four sections. So what that means is that with 90 students in four sections, I know you guys can do the math, just for clarity here, 22 and a half per section. So that means two classes of 22 and two of 23. When I look at what our optimal range is for students, 23 is the max that we list for that grade. So already we have two sections at that. And again, I'm not telling you any new information. I know that you all know this very well, but it's worth being said that this class, this rising second graders, they were yanked out of their schools in March of kindergarten, never to return, and then they went back in first grade, hybrid, remote, and in math. So coupled with the fact that hiring is so difficult right now, to the point that last year we had to close a school because we couldn't staff it for a day. I myself became a substitute teacher just to keep my kids in school, and I saw firsthand the difficulty not even being an educator, a trained educator, but I saw for, you know, these little kids trying to tap out CVCs and foundations. Can you, you can't see anything. So that's, that's the educational experience that these kids have had. So I just want all of you to have fresh in your mind the experience that they've had and to think about the challenges that we might have in, in getting these kids what they need to be where they're at in the environment that they've had. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Loveland. Anyone else in the public in front of us? Thank you. Michelle?
Ms. Holly Malloy, you are unmuted and recognized. You are still muted, Ms. Malloy.
Ms. Malloy, can you hear us? You need to unmute.
Got it. Hi. I'm actually Nicole Lyons of Relahan Road, 63 Relahan. I'm on my sister's.
We still can't hear you. Are you unmuted?
I am unmuted.
Michelle, anything on our? All right. Bear with us, Ms. Malloy, for just a moment. Thank you.
Ms. Malloy, I think you're all set.
Hi, can you hear me now?
We can. If you could speak up a little louder, that would be great.
Excellent. I just want to clarify. I'm actually Nicole Lyons. Can you hear me?
Ms. Malloy, could you hold on just a moment? Just pause a moment, please. Jeff, that's coming out on Michelle's computer, the voice. That because of our Zoom setup upstairs. Just bear with us one moment. Thank you so much.
It's playing back. It's now playback.
This must be a sign that we really want everyone back in public.
Ms. Malloy?
Yes, can you hear me? Yes?
Ms. Malloy, do you want to try right now? Go ahead.
Yep, sure. I just, I hear a bit of an echo. Just let me clarify. I'm Nicole Lyons, 63 Relahan Road. Can you guys hear me? Great. So I want to start by saying that you all did an amazing job last year during an emergency situation, and I am so grateful to you all for what you had to get through and how well you handled it. I guess I just wanted to say that I think the emergency is over now, okay? And I'm concerned to hear that we're going to rely on public health medical recommendations to decide on the masking issue. Behaving as if we're still in a state of emergency is not in the best interest of our children, who, by the way, for the last 16 months, in addition to dealing with the trauma of having their world turned upside down, have had to carry the burden of being the disease spreaders and potentially killing their grandparents. That's what the mask symbolizes to our children. So while statistics show that kids do not die from COVID, they do show that they do die from suicide, from substance abuse at an alarming rate. And this is absolutely going to impact their ability to learn, which is, by the way, also the opinion of the United States Department of Education. They have prioritized the securing of their social, emotional, and mental well-being as part of learning recovery efforts, because they recognize that kids cannot learn when they are experiencing trauma and distress. So if we're really talking about education here and what's best for our children, I think their ability to, and, you know, they need to recover this learning deficit that they, that they have to make up. We know that that's not going to happen if they're experiencing trauma, and I just really urge you all to, to consider and prioritize their social, emotional, and mental well-being over medical recommendations for public health, because that's really not putting our children first, and that is what we owe them after what they've gone through and where we want them to go in their education and personal success. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle?
Ms. Alexandra Crosswell.
You are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, I'm Dr. Alexandra Crosswell at 215 Leroy Avenue. I'm a psychological scientist by training. I run an NIH-funded research lab where I study human behavior, and I felt like one of the things I needed to share is the research showing that human facial expressions, including mouth reading, is essential for children to learn socio-emotional aspects of daily life as well as learning to read. And I felt that this was important as my son was in kindergarten this year, and some of the pivotal learning around reading was really lost. And so one of the things that I want the board to consider is the, the need in the future to bring in reading specialists or additional support for some of the lost learning that's going to take place, especially for our younger kids in the school system. Thank you.
Well, have a good evening.
User Aaron's phone, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, yes, my name's Erin Lumpkin. I live at 5 Archer Lane. I just wanted to say thank you. As a parent of a third grade student at Tokneek, thank you for the consideration in keeping the fourth section. As noted, the classes are near limit, and with the Avalon, the largest multi-dwelling housing unit in town zone for Tokneek District, I feel like the consideration of and the planning for the fourth section makes the most sense. As mentioned, the possibility of two more students enrolling seems highly likely, and having a fourth section versus additional aides in larger classes will be more beneficial to all. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Could you, could you state your last name again?
Lumpkin, Lumpkin, 5 Archer Lane.
Archer. Thank you so much.
We have no more raised hand at this time.
Okay. Well, thank you all for bearing with us through our start and our technical difficulties, but thank you all for participating again over Zoom, for all your important comments. Thank you for all our friends that showed up in person tonight. It's good to see those faces again. And thank you, everyone, this evening. May I have a motion to adjourn? Mrs. Stein, second by Mrs. Ackman, all in favor? Thank you. Please continue to enjoy your summer. Thank you.